We can adjourn. Sarah Boldle, you up first if you want to? You and Keith? Well, it's up to you if you have something to say or however you want to do it.
I've never been to these, so I don't know what the formality is, but just talk from here.
You can just sit up there.
Okay.
We want the audio for the video recording.
Okay, got it. Okay. So I have some, I think I had emailed some pictures or whatever, but that's okay because I already, I have some printouts as well here. But basically Keith and I are here because, oh, is that it? Is that us?
Yeah.
That's our lot right there. So the roads that, we're moving out there probably, we're hoping to get out there in about three months, give or take. But initially when we had planned this, you know, obviously the roads need work out there. They were historically maintained because I believe that house down the road there was the Ramey House. So all the land around it is the Schmaltz-Wiser land. And then the Ramey House is the one where the road kind of goes up. But needed a lot of work. We have a family out there. We need, we need a bus route out there. And we just thought, let's just get it done now and because we're going to move out there probably during the winter months. So we had, we called, we talked to Eric a little bit about it and it's Skylar, who's Skylar?
Skylar.
And said, we want to meet. And was just told that, you know, it just, there's too much to do right now. We just can't get you on a schedule, which we completely understood. So what we did is thought, you know, we'll find some contractors, do it ourselves, pay for it. Because one of the roads is a section line, is that right? One of the roads is a section line and that is the Sixth Avenue Southwest, I believe. We just thought we'd come here to see if we have labor invoices and we have gravel invoices. We just thought if there'd be a way that we could split the cost and then obviously get some input on help with maintaining it, making sure that we can keep gravel on it and since we're going to be living out there and we're, we're kind of right now the only ones that would be using off the left from Little Beaver and then Sixth Avenue at this point. We also did work on the ditches. Keith, what, what kind of work?
Yeah, they levelled both dishes, so you know, we don't get the snow to drip onto the road and things like that and you crouch the road too as well, so.
So did a really good job. I have pictures of the new road if you guys need that.
If I may ask, is this a before?
That's before.
And then an after photo with the gravel on it, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Thank you.
Yep.
We had brought, we brought this up at the last meeting, so I kind of talked to you guys about it. And we actually found that in the courthouse, Eighty Second and a Half, where they call Little Beaver, the one going east-west, there actually was, there is actually easement there because it wasn't on the actual section line. So that's how it got built on the west side of eighteen oh four two and then they also had easement to go on the east side. So actually the county does have easement on Eighty Second and a Half. Basically Eighty Second and a Half takes over what would have been Eighty Second or Eighty Third in that area because they couldn't build on those section lines. Probably because there's heat or beams or something. So actually Eighty Second and a Half is basically the same as Sixth Avenue. It's essentially basically like a section line. So we agreed that that's going to, you know, get added to the maintenance route, especially since it's going to be a bus route too.
Good.
So the maintaining of it, you know, like snow removal and everything, you guys are on the route basically now, so.
Good. Thank you.
Just the same as everybody else.
I used to live there thirty years ago.
What's that?
I lived there thirty years ago.
Well, and see, the discussion that we had was that when you actually look at it, the roads were built up. They weren't like your traditional two-track trail. It's just that once nobody lived there, nobody kept maintaining it, so it didn't get the gravel and you didn't get the blading. It's just basically been agricultural use and we've just broken some of it up.
But we grew up kind of.
So that's where, you know, getting back to it, it's not like we're going to be building roads or just maintaining what was already there, so.
And we've talked to a few of the farmers out there. They're super thankful that we spent money and got it done.
Right.
Like, oh, we should chip in there then too, right? I'm just kidding.
Well, you know, I'll just say, this is what I've always advocated for was, is, you know, you guys want that road and then even though it's going to be maintained by the county now and maybe should have always been maintained at some point. But you guys took the initiative, you purchased gravel, you hired some labor, you got it taken care of so you can use it. You know, that's essentially like what you talked about with specials. You guys just basically did that yourselves. You did your own inputs to help out and now I think the county can help out by taking over, you know, what was always done there before. So I applaud you guys for that, for taking the initiative. At least getting your own where you needed it to for now and, and now that we've done our research and see what we can do, I don't see an issue with maintaining it just like any other part of the road system, so. As far as the invoices go and everything, I don't know what everybody else is thinking. I'd kind of looked over it and thought about it and I guess if I was going to rationalize anything, I know the one thing we generally are short of is labor. Like, I mean, we have gravel, but it's always kind of a labor shortage if you were going to hire it out. So if there was anybody that wanted to, or any kind of cost splitting or anything like that, I would probably see the county maybe helping out with the labor side of it because that's the part that we'd be short of, so. You know, the gravel purchase, I guess, is.
So we could have just purchased the gravel from you guys at any time and then?
Well, I think right now that, I think you did it the right way by purchasing from somebody who sells gravel. I mean, the county hasn't advocated selling gravel to people because we do have people that sell gravel in the county. We don't really want to step on their toes or more so crush it for ourselves and our neighbors. So I'm glad you did it this way because we have people that sell gravel and we don't want to really get in their way either, so. I guess I don't know if anybody got inputs on the invoices or anything like that. I wish all people were like that, keeping their roads to themselves and doing it. Thank you for doing that. I guess like I said, I'll say, I don't, I don't have a problem with maybe splitting the labor on it. Like I said, just because they did hire somebody and that's always kind of been our shortcomings. It's just timing more than anything, so.
Yeah, did you look at the road plan?
Well, I was out there when they were going to, there was a board permit for, to bring power over there, so.
So it's built pretty, I mean?
It was a built-up section line, yeah, but just.
Just put it there.
Just got off the maintenance map because nobody lived there and it was just, so it was like a two-track rail road.
I would probably call it like a township road because it's a narrow road, but it is built up. There's separation, there's ditches. But it's probably not as big as like our typical, you know, whatever we consider our normal gravel roads now.
So it'd be considered like a secondary for us?
Well, right, yes, it's a secondary road, but I, I'd call it more like a township road because it's just, it was probably a really old road. Times were different. It was a narrower road, but it definitely was built up by a mucker or a dozer or something at some point. And it's not just flat with the fields around it.
Well, that's about the point, yeah.
It's probably two to even three feet higher than by the fields around it and there is a ditch profile. It was really obvious when they had John Richter do the, he came in with his own blade behind a tractor. He shaped everything up and then I went out there to do some work and I'm like, oh my God, like now that the grass was cleared away and he shaped it up, it was so obvious that it was, it was a built-up road where even before, when you look at pictures and the grass was tall, it kind of almost looked like your traditional, just section line kind of deal, you call it, so. So that's where.
Yeah, he also took out some of the crops on the side, got permission from the farmer and then he planted grass there as well.
Yep.
So.
I offered him a job at the county, but he said he was too busy, so. He did really nice, I mean, it was, it was good work. Really, the way they did it was really good and so I guess that's where.
And quite honestly, he, he gave us a deal on the labor, so. He's friends of ours, so I mean, typically that's, it's, it would be way more than that, so I'm sure we don't know that. With the labor and the gas and stuff like that, the truck usage.
What do you guys think? Do you have any opinions? Anything else? Like I said, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't mind splitting the labor with them just because like I said, it's always a timing and a labor issue with the county. So I don't mind. They took the initiative to get somebody else in there. You could argue it's probably our responsibility, but they took care of it, got it done. I mean, with gravel, we have our own gravel, so buying gravel from somewhere else maybe probably doesn't make the most sense. That's why I figured the labor is something worth dealing on because that's what we probably fell short on, so.
Yeah, I think it sets a good example for other people in county. I mean, they took this upon themselves and being we're so busy and behind, it's just nice that they realized that fact and that they decided to take it upon themselves to do this. And I understand you incur a lot of expenses doing that. The fact that we can help you out from not only with blading and roads and that should, you know, should help you out. Especially if it's going to be a bus route, we need to be aware of that.
Well, yeah, you're going to live there full-time now.
Yep, that's going to be our one.
Yeah. And I guess, I guess I would be in favor of the labor end of it also just because we are always behind. And I just think that it's nice to see that initiative come from the public, so for that, I think, I appreciate it.
Well, I think a common misconception when some of these projects get brought up and the comment is, the county can't afford it. Only so much it's even dollars and cents. It's just time, just being able to get it done rather than whether or not it was too expensive or not, so.
Yeah.
That's why I think in this situation, you know, they took the initiative and they did it. And I think, like you said, it sets a good example and I guess just for the sake of time, I wouldn't mind splitting it fifty-fifty on the labor.
Yeah.
That's where I kind of feel like that.
And that's, that's a thirty-six hundred.
Well, I'd be, the total is forty-one fifty-five.
Oh, sorry, yeah, yeah.
So the thirty-six is with the gravel then?
Well, that would probably be spread in the gravel, no, the gravel, the gravel, they'd be seven thousand and twenty dollars.
Okay, if you have the gravel with that.
Yep, and then the labor basically to level the road and looks like probably remove an old fence and level out the ditches and do a lot of the stuff that we probably would have been doing too came off to forty-one hundred and fifty-five dollars. So I would say, just doing my math in my head, roughly about two thousand dollars on the county behalf or something there.
Two thousand fifty, something like that.
Feel like that'd be fair enough since that.
Yeah.
Great.
Sound reasonable at least? I'd like that in form of a motion, if we're in agreeance on it, so.
I'll make that motion. I'll make a motion that would split the cost of the labor.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner White will do, do a fifty percent split on the labor for the, I always want to say the Wiser Road, but it's Boldle Road, sorry about that. For the, basically for Sixth Avenue Southwest there and Eighty Second Half, so. We have motions that are second.
I'll say.
Second by Commissioner Hall. Is there any more discussion? Not hearing any. Y'all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ours? Okay.
Thank you. Thanks everybody.
Thanks for coming in.
Yeah.
Welcome to the county.
Thank you. Let's see our household now.
That's right. Michael Schneider?
Yep.
You're up. Want to sit at the table here?
In July I was here about a building permit for out in the river out there, you know? Well, at the time my uncle was okay with it. Now when Mr. Hanson drew me an agreement up to take up there for him to sign and somebody told him his property's going to be worth less money if I build onto this trailer house.
Oh.
So he wouldn't sign it no more. I don't know why, it'll be less. Our lot, when we look to the river, you can see the river perfect from our lot, but he wants to pick, put a big storage shed. Well, that'll make ours cheaper too, you know, or whatever. But so now I was going to see what I got to do, how far away I have to stay from the property line on that cement slot, you know? And I took pictures of it and Josh has them. He's got a building that's only three feet away from my property line, you know? And I'd be three feet away from his. Here's how far away he's from mine on his buildings, you know? So I was going to see if I can.
So you weren't ever going onto his property there?
No.
That was not on his?
No.
Okay.
But I was too close.
Too close.
Yeah, I was, I'm about three feet away.
You were going to follow the concrete dial line basically.
Right.
On this one right here where the original building was.
That was as far as.
And where that rock is over to the fence, that's my property. Over to the end of the rock, you know, it's about three feet. And then we agreed to get it that if I build that close, he would have signed the paper. But now he won't because he thinks it's going to bring his lot. And this is the backside of his lot. It's not the front or nothing, you know? And he had it all surveyed. He just had it surveyed like a week or two ago to make sure the property. When you look at the other picture on there, Josh, you can see the pink flags where it's all, every corner he had resurveyed again and stuff to make sure. And the original pins, they all lined up with the original pins, you know, so. But I was going to see once I can build on there without him having to have him sign a paper or stay over.
Well, if I remember right, that building permit was contingent on the variance being signed by my uncle. So I would say the building permit now is probably null and void, but what was the setback issue?
There are setbacks, but when we looked at it last time, because if you look at page thirty-three and your zone is up there.
Yep.
Subsection eighty-two, they have setbacks, but those are for residential and commercial districts. We may cultural, we may recreational districts when they have setbacks listed. And so whereas this was a residential district, we're looking at a ten-foot setback. And obviously his neighbor would not be watching that either at three feet. So we were just kind of in a position at that previous meeting where we weren't really sure if we're comfortable with the house being a foot away. So we kind of thought, well, why don't you have your neighbor sign off saying he has no problem and then have to worry about it? I don't really think there is a setback. I don't really think there's a reason that we wouldn't be able to deny this building permit request. That's just my reading of the law.
Right, that's, I mean, I kind of remember going through that too, that we thought the recreational one eight did not have setbacks because that's what we ran into with the threshers that do where they built, they built their addition right on the fence line and there really was nothing against that. Right, I think it was more so for future generations and trying to keep the peace more than anything on that. But that being said, I don't believe we do have a setback ordinance for recreational, so. I mean, from what I've seen here. When people call me and ask about setbacks, I give them the residential number just to be on the safe side. Because, you know, it is a subdivision area in the recreational area, so we didn't follow. The past few months it was the residential ones and we haven't had an issue, you know, until this one. Nothing's been close.
Well, you, you wanted to utilize that slab you had there.
And there was a building on there to begin with, you know?
Well, anyway.
Your brother tore it down for me.
I think that's the, the trouble we're running into now is I think going forward with new development, it's smart to probably go by the residential rules. But when you have these older situations where like Joe said, I mean, if you're going to make Mike honor any kind of setback in recreational area, then it's fair to say that we can go paint a line down that other building and make him cut it off with the chains. You know, I mean.
Well, it's not like, it's not like its foundation, I mean, its foundation's still there. It's not like you took everything away and have to start again.
It's completely, really closer to, and right, and I, I think we kind of, and I, it's starting to refresh my memory now. I don't think we really had a problem with it, just like to guarantee future issues. It's like, well, you have to sign an agreement and it's done. Well, technically, if you were really going to argue it, I don't know if you need that agreement. It's more so for the other property to say that they were okay with it. And like you said, you're kind of allowing that on the other part of the property, so.
If I was building new, I wouldn't have no problem moving over, you know? But the electrical's on the other side of the slab. I'd have to build over top of the electrical, the sewer you guys put in this right here.
Well, if you would, if you'd be, if you would have kept the original building, I mean, we would, we would be having a discussion about two buildings being three feet from the problem. Yeah, so it's.
Well, the other thing, yeah, okay, if this is still, this is still part of this foundation, well, then you should tell the other guy, you should move his over there.
Well, that's why, like you said, you start to get into that line where you hate to allow for exceptions. But in a situation where these exceptions are already being made on the same properties, it's kind of hard to. Like, I agree with Josh's scenario. On these newly developed properties, you shouldn't have fallen on some residential setbacks. But this old stuff was developed long before anybody was paying attention to this, so to, to start forcing it.
So does that mean Mike would have to fill out a new app?
Well, the trouble, I guess, would be more procedural since we did kind of, I don't know, did we have it contingent or was that part of the agreement? I have to look in the minutes to see what.
It was a, it was a motion. I, you guys talked in the minutes.
Right, so.
I got one here too.
Yeah, it was circled, I believe. If you look at it, it was circled. That right there.
I have amongst my pile of papers here.
So Joe, can't they just do a motion? Do we send this motion from the July meeting? Or we already moved it last night? Yeah, July?
I suppose I can do it that way. I think then with another motion to approve the building permit as applied.
If I had to be building new, I wouldn't have no problem moving over, you know, but everything's there already, you know? If I pour another slab and that electrical shit all moves.
I mean, that's part of your structure already. I mean, that structure's still there basically is what I'm saying.
Yeah, really with the concrete foundation, that's not what it's ever gone, it's just a top part's not there. You could argue that it's still there.
And I don't know if they really understand, they're ninety-some years old, when I talked to them about what they're actually saying, you know? They didn't really, he just, she got all excited and somebody told her their property isn't going to be worth less, whatever.
Yeah, it says here that the motion was with the condition that there's a signed agreement with the place between Michael Schneider Jr. and John Nagle. So yeah, you would either, you would probably have to rescind that motion basically, I would think, and then approve the building permit as applied or try to, like Joe said, I don't know how else you'd do it, so.
Well, I'll make a motion to rescind the motion.
So you'll make a motion, Commissioner Michael makes a motion to rescind.
The motion of July fifth, was it?
July fifth, yes.
And then to grant them the.
Well, we'll do it separate so it's clear if you want to make a mess, but so Commissioner Michael's made a motion to rescind the previous approval of the building permit from the July fifth minutes for Michael Schneider Jr. Is there a second?
No second.
Second if I, Commissioner Hall? Is there any more discussion? Not hearing any. Y'all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ours? So that motion or approval would be rescinded? So now there's currently no motion or building permit for it, so we would have to. I don't know, in this case, I don't know if we'd have to make him reapply since he wouldn't even meet the deadline really. It would still be applicable. The fee doesn't change. The only thing that would change is that he wouldn't need that variance, so. So I would say if you want to approve it, then you would have to just approve the building permit as applied for to be applied. So, so I'm wrong on that?
That's what I would do.
Okay.
So Joe, if we approve a new building permit and they come back, I mean, we don't have no footage anyway on the recreational anyway, so we should be all right legally?
But I don't, I don't think. There's any way we can really prevent him from building where he wants to build there. As long as it's on his lot, he's already had it surveyed out of state. It's like it's going to be clean there. I mean, the building was already there to begin with.
Right, but that's a whole different one. Every time you do something different, it's always great.
Yeah, if we would have passed an ordinance, say, last year to put setbacks in for recreational areas and then tore it down and wanted to build, we'd have to build somewhere else, so we still would have done that, so.
Well, could you make the argument that since the concrete foundation is still there, there's still technically structure? I mean, I mean, you know, I mean, if you really wanted to argue about it, I mean, the foundation is there, so arguably nothing ever really left. If you, I mean, I don't know, like I said, we're getting into the legal limits of things where you'd probably have to get a judge to tell you, but I guess my argument is like, it's not like they ripped out the foundation and everything. Now they're totally starting from scratch. You could make the argument, like Mike said, to move it, but just trying to utilize the current structure, which is already there and has been there for twenty, thirty years, forty?
Forty, they're audited in ninety-one.
I think to make that argument, to make that argument before somebody to move that, that would be tough, so.
Yeah, that makes sense. You were talking about kind of like repair or renovation versus building new. And it's not just the foundation. Like he said, there's, there's also utilities there, sewers, that type of whatever, so.
And all those.
There's a lot that's.
All those were replaced from a previous building. That was already in that spot, so.
There's probably as much cost there as there is building.
Yeah, it's probably going to be cheaper anyway, sorry, Mike, but.
What's that?
It's not going to be any cheaper building where you're at anyway, probably in the long run, but it's, nothing's cheap, but anyway.
I'll make a motion to approve the permit as applied for.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Michael to approve the building permit for Michael Schneider Jr. and Cheryl Jankula as applied for from June twentieth. Is there a second to that motion?
No second.
Second if I, Commissioner Hall? Is there any more discussion on building permit for Michael Schneider Jr.? Not hearing any. Y'all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ours? Building permit approved.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, thank you guys.
David Schultenhardt, you're up.
Floor is yours. I was just going to see if I could get some maintenance done to Fifty-Seventh Street, which goes into our farm there. Last year we got flooded real bad and it washed a lot of the road away. Full of potholes.
So David called me here a couple of weeks ago and way away he had asked for me to leave Fifty-Seventh Street. I asked him where Fifty-Seventh Street was and he said it goes through his yard. And I said, well, that can't be Fifty-Seventh Street because I always thought that road was a private driveway for Schultenhardt's. But when you look into both plot books and Google Earth and even some of our other maps like Josh's, it's Fifty-Seventh Street is one of them meandered streets. So I told Dave that I don't think we'd probably do that since it mostly is just a private drive, even though it's called Fifty-Seventh Street. And David told me that the county has always put gravel on and took care of the culverts in there before. And so then I asked him, of course, why do you think they did that? And he said, because if you go east of the farm yardways, there's a gravel pit. And the county used to screen gravel out there back in the older days before they crushed gravel. They used to just basically screen it and pit run it out there. And so they used to do like we do with all gravel pits and maintain the access road. It just happened to be the road that went through the Schultenhardt farm ranch there, so. So then that changed my mind a little bit because the one thing that I remind of is that the Wobom pit, once we're done crushing this fall, that's probably the last we're going to crush of the Wobom pits. So now we're probably in search of some gravel areas in the northern part of the county. So David had expressed interest in, you know, renewing those agreements or, you know, working with the county on possibly working on some gravel. So then that kind of changed my opinion a little bit on fixing that road because I would like to go in there and maybe sample for some gravel, see if there's enough there to utilize and maybe see if, you know, David said he's willing to work with us if, if it was something, you know, I mean, obviously it'd be crushing out of there immediately, but.
Is there gravel there yet?
I don't know. I know when I was probably before junior high, my dad had them out there and they were digging some gravel there.
And like Josh showed, there's still kind of like a, you can see there's basically a hundred claimed pit there. And then David had mentioned that there are other spots where they never even mined, or there could be more.
When I was a kid, it would be farther north there. I mean, right about where your hand is if you go to the left there a little bit, right there, they were, that's a hill there. That was the last that I remember that they were in there. That's a big hill. I don't know what is there.
So you don't know if they ever had any written agreements?
Uh, I mean, we'd have to do some more research. My assumption is probably not because a lot of them were just handshake type deals. But basically, from my understanding from talking to Dave, was that they use Fifty-Seventh Street as an access road to get into the gravel pit. It's probably the only way to get into that property back there because otherwise you're crossing a creek in any number of places. And so I started putting two and two together on the way to county probably gravel that every ten, twenty years and tried to fix it up just because they were utilizing it. Now it hasn't been used for thirteen years, fourteen years, but that doesn't mean that there isn't a possibility to do it, then.
Do you own, do you own all the property?
Yeah, yeah. Okay. The will's going through probate right now.
Well, but I just mean, not that it's, you know, some house is quarter up there or whatever.
Okay. Where the gravel pits are now, that's no problem.
Okay.
I mean, it's a possibility now.
Well, wait, I mean, and so I had Skylar go out and take a look at it. Basically what Dave was mentioning is when we had that giant ten-inch rain there last year, that water come washing through there and it didn't like wash the road out, but it washed the gravel off the road and kind of made it tough. And then there's a culprit in there that's probably wasn't working. It's either plunked or rusted out or shrouded. And then that's why the water went over the road, so. The theory is just cut a culvert in and then probably put a little gravel, blade it up. Dave's always maintained it, he's done snow removal, he's done the, you know, the light blading, you know, with loader and blade, whatever he has, but this has kind of got a little lot of handwork, it's more than he can probably put together, so... Like I said, when he originally asked, Dave and I went around for about twenty minutes on whether or not the county should do it, and but we ended up, the, once the more I started asking questions, I'm like, why in God's name would the county be doing that in there? Well, then when he mentioned the gravel pit, I started making sense, so... That being said, I think it's definitely worth exploring, you know, working with Dave on possibly doing some gravel work, like we gotta do some samples or anything back there, and so I guess I don't have a problem with fixing that road up, if it means us going back there and just start doing some work and checking out for gravel and rock or whatever, so... That's the reason why Dave's here today, and I told him to come in to kind of explain it, and...
So how much work is there, Skylar?
Uh, we got maybe an hour or so of blade work and cutting the culverts, probably. Within a day, we should have it all, though, I think.
I mean, I would like, I mean, I guess to explain a little more is I would like to probably have some kind of a lease signed with it, so it's not that we're fixing the road and then all of a sudden we're not going in there, but Dave's more than happy to work with us on at least, like, an access lease right away, start exploring a little bit, and if we find something, then we would probably negotiate like we do with anybody else who crush gravel with on a royalty or anything, and you know, if there's not enough back there to get a crusher in there, you know, we could still maybe utilize the pit for, I mean, you could use it for fill or anything, I mean, there's opportunities, so I'd like to at least check it out before we just write it off.
We should.
And if there is a possibility that enough gravel could be in there to crush, and we located a new spot in the northern part of the county, which is actually a lot closer to eighty-three, it's, it's an ideal location and we can get it to work, so that's why.
Is there any gravel exposed there now at all?
Well, it's never been reclaimed, I mean, you can go back there and grab a bucket full of gravel, but it's got bigger rocks in toward if I go back there and grab a bunch of that, start putting it on the road, then I gotta go pick a bunch of rock out there and stuff, it's, it's not screened, actually. I don't know how deep that goes or how far it goes, I don't, I don't know.
So, I mean, when they did that, when that, the stuff that's not reclaimed, was that a pretty big area, is it?
Oh, yeah, it's probably, I don't even look at the map, there are maybe five acres or whatever back there on that hill.
I'm sure they just went back there and probably opened it up with a dozer or a loader or something, so it's probably, you know, even looking at the pictures, I mean, it's pretty crude, like, they just peel the dugs of the rocks that are rid.
There's two hills there, right there, where they used to dig a lot out of, right there and right there. But I was just a kid when they did that, so I don't know.
Well, and at least, I guess, just for my own sake, I'm something that I feel, I don't feel that it's probably right that there's probably an underclaimed gravel pit back there anyway, so I'd like to explore a little more and see if there's something we can salvage out of there, then in the meantime, if there's something worth doing, then when we're done, we can probably reclaim it all too, and maybe do that too, so, I mean, it's just, it's just my own personal feeling, I don't, I don't think it's right that we just, that the county left a split gravel pit back there all these years either. Maybe that's the way they wanna do it, I don't know, but I think with gravel being as difficult as it is to find, or someone that's willing to work with you in an area that we know we probably need it, I think it's worth the chance to just check it out and nothing comes of it, I guess, you know, there's little road maintenance in on it, but that's a small price to pay there, it's worth the gravel, in my mind, so that's, that's where I'm at with it, and feel free to disagree or whatever, so.
No, I would agree with it. It's basically a day's work and if he's willing to work with us, then we can find something back there that we can use, but we have to keep hunting for gravel, we're running out, so. So I, I would work with that, I would too.
Well, I think what we'll do, Dave, is we'll work with Joe on just some kind of a simple access agreement or something like that, so we have something in place, so we can get away from these handshake deals, but if you're willing to work with us and we can get something agreeable, we'll go through with it, and then I think we can probably rehab that road a little bit, so we can use it for access, and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Okay?
Sounds good.
Definitely, he'll probably be in contact with Skylar or one of us or something to let you know.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan. We're ready for you, Paul, if you're ready, we're a little early, but...
I wasn't able to get here last month, so I guess I'm bringing this this month. Ninety-Eighth Street is finished. What you see is what you get, is that correct?
Skylar?
For the most part, yes.
It's done?
Should be, I mean, we seeded it and everything like that.
Does anybody know what that cost the county?
I believe the open records request that was made by someone, I think I looked at it too, and it came out to forty-seven thousand dollars and change, was kind of the, was what the numbers show for the open records request, I mean, it's probably not perfect on every aspect, but it's probably at forty-seven thousand dollars, it's probably somewhere in the neighborhood of forty to sixty, thirty, I mean, depending on everything that was counted, but I would say probably around fifty thousand dollars.
Uh, last month, I got here on the toe, tail end of the meeting, and there was an approval to do some asphalt work out by the golf course for like seven thousand dollars.
Yep.
This job here was never brought to the commission with a budget of whatever for approval, I guess in-house stuff, you just go and do it?
Well, I mean, we have a budget for road maintenance and that kind of falls under that.
But I would've thought that somewhere along the line, there would've been a cost estimate for this project, and it would either have been approved or disapproved.
Well, I think that's the process that we probably learned that should be happening. I think that's the one thing that I've learned, at least, like, with that process, is that you have to leave discretion to the road superintendent and the road employees, but I think before that discretion comes, they should come with a list of five roads that they wanna do, and probably have a, maybe a rough cost estimate of what they think they're gonna do, a just light description, whether it's shoulder pulling, culvert replacement, you know, I mean, whatever, I mean, I, I think that's the one thing that I learned, 'cause I'll just tell you with Ninety-Eighth, the intention of that, I think, from the beginning, was shoulder pulling. And then the shoulder pulling turned out that they wanted to go a little further down the slope, and from what I was told by a couple of the guys was that while they went down the slope, they actually found, I think, two culverts for sure, that were either plugged, rusted out, nobody even knew they were there. So that's what led to the culvert replacements, and then once you go that far down, well, then they started cleaning the ditch, and then they just went for it, they redid basically that whole structure, that probably, I mean, that was a miscommunication, and I think that was something that, probably the learning process from that is that that needs to be communicated better, 'cause my intention when we talked about that was they had pulled the slope shoulders, hadn't really been gravelled yet, and they said they were gonna do a little more work, and that's what I thought they were gonna be doing, is probably just blade it up a little more and put some gravel on, but...
Yeah, I, I agree with, you know, like, it's something that needs to come in front of the board. If it's maintenance, it's one thing, Skylar or whatever they do, but if it comes to start rebuilding the road or something, it needs to come in front of the board, and we need to know what's going on out there, I totally agree with you, you know?
Well, like, uh, you worked down on Eighth Avenue, well, I mean, that's, you need to work there too, how much work do you do there?
Well, I, I think the argument you can make, and the one thing that's happened with Ninety-Eighth, and why it's probably just been a sore spot, is I think it began, is road maintenance. 'Cause what we were always talking about is what David's been doing, which is shoulder pulling, maybe a culvert that they seen really badly, they replace it, but most of the time, it was one blade and maybe a gravel truck, and that was about it, and this one, like I said, they went down the shoulders, then they wanted to go just a little bit further, then they found the culverts, well, then now that you find, you know, it, it kind of speedballed or snowballed out of the way, and that's where that communication probably should've just been better with commissioners, 'cause I'm thinking commissioners intended on Ninety-Eighth being built the way it got built. But you also have a scenario, just like when you tear into a house project, and next thing you know, you're doing the cabinets, next thing you know, it's like, you can't quit now, and that, I'm not saying that's the best process, but I think going forward, that's something that I definitely wanted to bring forward too, is that we should just start having a list of, let's just say, it doesn't have to be every road in the county, 'cause that's a big list, but you could have five real projects that you wanna do, and you get a rough idea of if you think it's gonna take a hundred hours with two machines or whatever, and then from there, we can maybe prioritize, like, well, either do one big one or maybe three smaller ones, and so honestly, I think that's the good thing that came out of this project, is that we just realized there was a lack of communication, which you gotta have with the new superintendent and some newer guys too, and...
Well, when David Crum was in here defending himself and gone, you know, he was really bragging himself up, how he was the only one that had the ability and all this to do that kind of a job. I've driven that road, and I am not impressed with his ability, and if, I would challenge you to go down and look at that road and look at the work that's done there. There's rocks to pick, there's culverts that are half graded around, there's one culvert that I'm not exactly sure which way the water runs there, but the water would probably have to jump up about six inches to get into the culvert, if that's the way the water goes. I, with all of David's bragging, I'm disappointed in the quality of his work. I don't see where the slopes are where they should be, the north ditch at the bottom of the slope, there's curb and gutter where it wasn't finished out. If I was a landowner down there, I would not be impressed if I had to mow that ditch. I'm just...
Well, he kind of begged it there, I guess. Most people down there think David's doing an excellent job, they're all happy with his work down that area. I can't complain about that road that, you know?
Well, I'm not saying that the gravel on top is, but the rest of that is just, in my mind, I don't know, it's just not finished. If I was a landowner, like I said, along there, I would not be impressed. I don't know what the road looked like before it was taken care of, but...
No, I, I, I don't know, I beg to differ, I think they did a good job on that road, and I...
Well, if you look at those culverts, you guys are pretty consistent. It's pretty hard for you guys to get a culvert in straight and level. When Nick was road superintendent, if you look at those two culverts across from Missouri Valley Act, when they built that road, they look like bananas in there, they hold water. Francis put a culvert in by Donald Earthmarks and did not take care of the exit. That culvert has sealed it in. And you look at those culverts down there, I got out of the pickup, I went down and I looked through them culverts. It just, I don't know, it's not there in my book. You know, we're spending three hundred hours of man-hours down there, there's roads that have not been bladed since spring. It's ditch mowing time, they're not ready for mowing. Pulled, pulled, uh, blade operators off to do gravel hauling, our roads suffered this summer bad. And you want the ditch is mowed, or it's a five hundred dollar fine, and it's ditch mowing time. And the roads aren't ready, and if they're not dressed up a little bit before winter, come spring, it is not gonna be pretty. I was working by your place errand there at Melvin Wolf's, you haul gravel east. You're always on the farmers about overloads and busting up the roads. County trucks busted up the shoulder of the road by Melvins, driving in the same rut for two days. Now, you covered it up with gravel, but the road is still busted up underneath.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, I mean, you're gonna bust up roads when you haul gravel, that's part of the problem.
But all they had to do was move over and just drive, when you see a soft spot coming, you don't just keep running that rut trip after trip after trip.
Yeah, but I just, I mean, I just mowed their road shoulders, I don't think they're that busted up, I just went over and a week ago.
You didn't see it before they covered it up then?
Yeah, well, I went over it with a tractor and a mower, and I felt like the road isn't pretty ditched, so...
Up past Melvins?
I did, I mowed all of Melvin's ditches for him, so, yeah, I did Melvin's ditches, I did McCroory's, I did Alvin's lots, 'cause I hate Alvin's ditches, except for Melvin's, he does it himself, but I'm, I'm his neighbor, so I went and clipped his shoulders for him like I do every year, and I mean, I don't, I, I actually thought Al had an heck of a job, because there was hardly a windrow anywhere, and I mowed them all with a stick mower, so... I mean, I don't feel like they're that bad, and I'm sure there's spots out there, I mean, I've seen spots, I mean, I just seen a spot the other day when I was out with my septic truck, where it does look like it had been bladed for two or three months, 'cause there was some gra, grass actually growing on the road, and I called Skylar, and they went out and bladed it, and but that was an odd road, that was in between two routes, and they probably didn't realize which one was supposed to do it, I mean, things like that happen, no doubt about it, you know, I mean, there's definitely weak spots out there, but I don't know, and I know the West Valentin area, I know that their blade operator was doing a lot of gravel hauling, probably more than most, so that area didn't get bladed as much, but we've already addressed that, that he's gonna be out probably today, he's been out for the last week, and trying to just catch up and get his roads going again, and I'm sure all blade operators are probably gonna be going, I mean, especially now we've got a little bit of moisture, not much, but they've been going, and seeing them, I got a picture today, actually, of a blade going by a guy's house, and so...
I don't, Paul, is, is there any roads in the county that, that you think would be okay?
Uh, there's a couple, I've been on some.
I mean, you know, it seemed like you kind of say, well, you guys are not blading, you guys should be graveling, and they're graveling, and then they say, well, they should be blading, I mean, not really...
I never said they should be graveling.
Well, earlier this summer, you were in there and said, Dave, those, those roads out by your place are horrible, they need gravel, they need gravel.
And you, and they did get some gravel.
Okay, so now they put gravel on, now you're, now you're kind of saying, well, they're not blading, well, what, I mean, they can't, there's almost so many guys.
I understand that, but if you know you've got a man-hour shortage.
And they're trying to fix some roads, and now you guys are complaining, well, they're not fixing roads, not doing anything, well, now they fix roads, and well, they shouldn't be doing that. I mean...
What's your policy on smoking in company or county vehicles or equipment?
It's forbidden.
Then why do we allow it?
We don't. Unless you've seen somebody do it, but I haven't, I mean, I've never been.
So nobody smokes in, in the equipment?
I mean, not to my knowledge, 'cause it's in the handbook that you're not supposed to use any tobacco products in the county vehicles, so it's never been reported, I mean...
I guess the next time I see that, I'll have to get a picture of it for you.
I mean, if you got proof, that's fine, I mean, I'm not against it, I'm just saying I don't, I've never actually witnessed anybody do it, and I've had people ask about it, but I've never actually seen anybody, like, tell me that a specific person has done it, so...
I think that's with all tobacco products, right?
Right, I mean, everything, it's, it's, we're under a no tobacco policy, if I'm, if I'm mistaken, so that's the policy.
Out by Max Gross's on eighty-six, that road still hasn't been bladed since the spring, when I said that there was a windrow on each side of the road, and I was out there last week, and those culverts are still flagged. When somebody's plowing snow, they put a front wheel on one of those horsehide culverts, that is not gonna be good. And there is a culvert right at the edge of the road down there on Ninety-Eighth, that is right on the edge of the road, and it's grassed over on that inside of a turn. And I would like to know what the process is.
Down, Skylar?
So what's that?
I'm gonna write them culverts down and check them out.
And they're on our list?
Well, right, especially if they're flagged, I'm guessing, and bleeding, I'm most bummed, yeah, just make sure that, make sure you clarify what's going on there, if it's on the list to get down, or if there's a change of plan or something like that. I mean, I know it's tough with the culverts, 'cause I mean, even on Ninety-Ad, we were, the road I live on, there's two box culverts that are literally two inches out of the shoulder, and they're huge, I don't know why they were so narrow, I don't, you know, but I mean, there's there's several culverts like that on my road, that I've learned the hard way mowing the ditches, though, so, I mean, some of these culverts are like a box culvert, they, I don't even know how you extend it, it's huge, and they're, they're big projects, so...
I'd just like to know what the process is, how you determine who gets fined and who does not get fined for mowing the roads? How you go about that process?
Well, I think the original process was, is the road department, usually the blade guys recognize the road step or the ones that ditches are weren't done, and then I think they went out and took pictures of video, that was kind of the verification, and then they would go and mow it, and then use those pictures and submit them, and what it'd be... I believe that's the process, that's how it always goes, of course, you know, so...
So the, the blade operators, whatever, say, maybe the stitches mowed or whatever, then goes from there?
I believe that's how it is, or the road superintendent, if they're driving out there and they see a ditch that hasn't been mowed, or if it's not good enough or whatever, then they take pictures of it, or, I mean, mostly a lot of that falls on the blade guys, 'cause they're the ones out on the roads, so...
Well, I guess that's about all I have, are just information.
Okay. Any more, anybody got any questions for Paul, or? Anything else, Paul?
I said, any, anytime you guys wanna go for a look at roads, I'd be up for it.
Okay. Well, if that's it, thanks for coming in, Paul.
Yep.
Skylar, we got some utility permits here?
Yep.
They should all be approved.
Utility permit for South Central Regional Water to install a two-inch water line approximately eighteen hundred feet on the west side of Fourth Avenue Southeast, northeast corridor of Section ten, Township one thirty-five, Range seventy-seven. And another utility permit is for Alfred Bush to install and maintain facilities on Seventy-second Street Southeast, south half of Section thirty-one, Township one thirty-four, Range seventy-six. Looks like two utility permits for Chemilektrik for boring underneath Seventy-second Street Southeast and Ninth Avenue Southeast. Anybody got any questions on them or?
Are they all good?
Yep, didn't see any issues.
I guess I'll entertain a motion to just approve all the utility permits. I guess there's four of them. I'll just do them all unless somebody's got a question.
Yes, they're good.
Well, I'll entertain a motion. Motion to Commissioner Everly to approve the four utility permits presented by Superintendent Crowe.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Whitehead. Any more discussion on the utility permits? Not hearing any of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, Skylar, anything you wanna bring up, talk about?
Okay, first of all, there's a there's a local road conference, regional conference, it happens every year in South Dakota. It's out of state travel, so I'm asking for approval for Mr. Ibach and I to travel out of state to attend this conference.
When is that?
It's October eighteenth and the twentieth, through the twentieth.
What do they all present there?
Uh, they do, um... Like the Virginia LTAP comes there, like how to keep yourself out of jail and keep the county out of court. Gravel tips and stabilizing roadways and stuff like that. There's a small section on asphalt. Obviously, there's some vendors there. Talks about go-to-priory, grassland, bridge inspection tips. Talk about cutting edges. It's a pretty good conference. A lot of counties go to it. I've heard from a lot of different county road superintendents that if you're gonna attend one, this is a little bit of a thing.
Where's it at?
Uh, it is in Rapid City.
Too far away. Just planning on driving down there? Yeah, I don't know if I have any issue with it. I guess, I mean, you guys got any issue?
I feel good.
Rapid City? Not a big deal?
You guys are gonna be there with a motion to...
I don't think so, because I mean, it's, you got a budget for, didn't even wait for travel and that stuff there to come out of that, so...
Good.
So, you're fine? You got an update on the asphalt patching by the golf course?
Uh, yes, that is actually gonna happen tomorrow.
Okay.
It was supposed to happen today, actually, but he got held up, so he's gonna, he's working in Strasburg today. Tomorrow morning, I'm gonna prep it and he'll come pave it, um, tomorrow afternoon.
And how about the Kelch culverts?
Yeah, we're working on it. We, uh, tore it all out. Culverts got delivered late Thursday afternoon. Finished prep work. Actually, both of them, I'm thinking both of them should be set today. At the end of the day, they were starting to set the last one last night, ran into a little issue, but seemed to be taking care of that, so both culverts should be set. So, now I was just backfilling it and stuff like that. It's a lot of work.
How many guys you got working on it?
Uh, well, we got truck drivers bringing in material and stuff like that, so there's two right now, or today there's three now. We'll come set that, so...
We just got them filling the later dozer or something like that or?
Well, I mean, it's a big culvert to manhandle and we gotta try to set the flare directions, some labor. And then when we go to backfilling, then we, a lot of compacting we have to do on that, so...
So, is Greg and Callan helping?
Uh, not physically, but they've been very helpful throughout the whole project. Whatever we need, they willing to help us out. They moved a bunch of fence for us and stuff like that. Showed us their little bit of gravel pit if we need some more riprap for that project. So, they've been, like, not physically down there helping, but very helpful on the project, so...
So, you anticipating finishing that up hopefully soon here or?
Yeah, I mean, depends on how it all goes. I mean, that's, I don't know if anybody really realizes eighty-four inches, that's seven foot culvert.
Well, right, but I mean, you're just, you're foreseeing it, just...
As of now, I foresee it just going smoothly. Once they're in the ground, then it's just building the ground back up. So, backfilling and riprap and stuff like that. Yeah, maybe two weeks we'll be hopefully done with it, that's including riprap and everything, but...
Are you riprapping with some of that concrete we have, or are you using rock or what?
Uh, there was a lot of rock in that, so we're salvaging a lot of rock from that.
Okay.
The concrete was, they poured it like three different times. Some of those chunks were way too big, we couldn't get them to break up, so we had to haul that off, but... So, that's the update on the Twenty-first Avenue project. I was contacted by Ms. Tina Weber. She's got a plot out on...
She's not working for the county now. Now here comes another question.
So, it's lot, twenty-five A is Beaver Bay subdivision, so it'd be twenty-three, one thirty-two, seventy-nine. Anyway, um, she thinks the county road or the road, I guess it would be called Beaver Bay Trail, cuts through her property line. I guess she sent Commissioner Everly a letter. In the letter, she states...
You got to read your mail a bit, that's all.
Oh, I got it.
Oh, you did, okay, good.
She says, "Attached the two maps of the property owned by my sister and I located at Beaver Bay." Property is in the commissioner's district, or in Mr. Everly's commissioner's district. "As you can see, according to the map, on the road runs right through our property. We aren't making it an issue right now, but we'll probably try to sell it within the next year or two. We'll have to get it surveyed. With the road going through our property, it'll make it difficult to sell. And we're hoping that something can be done about it in the meantime." So, she contacted me about it, um, and then she tried to go out and find her own property markers with a metal detector. She was unsuccessful. She found a couple old pier counts, a couple nails, stuff like that. So, I guess my recommendation now is we have Wold come down and survey it and see where that road actually exists and where the property, where the property lines are. So, um, we can address the issue if it is on our property line. So, if they do decide to sell it, then, you know, within a year or two, if we have to move the road or whatever, so...
I guess I'm curious to find out if the county actually has easement on that road. Because once you, once you go over that...
I think this part was part that the county obtained from the tax deed auction.
Oh, from that, sure.
So, this is the county's town.
Okay.
I did look at the plans. Of this, there were pins put in, that's why Tina got that in from each one. But I'm assuming those pins probably got removed when the road was built, but...
So, we didn't probably build that road in there, but we inherited it through the, when the delinquent taxes and we took that road over and we didn't want to sell it to anybody for obvious reasons because he postures his access, so, yeah. Okay. Another better question is, is where do you move it to? There ain't any room down there. It's the reason why the blade doesn't even go down that far. It's all trees, it's property developed all along. I don't know if I could even...
So, she wants us to move the road to make her lot worth more money? No.
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 She thinks in her own spot.
She just thinks the road's on her property line, so she's not looking to sell it now, but maybe in a year or two. So, I mean, obviously, if the county's approaching on the property line, you need to address that issue. We'll get roads maybe put in the wrong location. Yeah, so...
Yeah, and then we inherited it when we got it back on taxes, so...
So, I guess before we speculate or anything like that, I think we should have it surveyed and see where it's actually at. And then go from there, figure out how much is it. Maybe there's none on there, maybe there's all of it's on there, maybe it's a couple feet, so...
It's amazing when you take a picture at a different time of year. That road doesn't look like it's that encumbered in this picture, but you put it on there right now and then trees are all full of leaves. It's, uh, you can't even hardly get a high vehicle through there. Yeah, I know, I'd say you're probably on the right page on Skylar. I just verify exactly where the road is before we even decide if there was something that should be done. It's probably the right way to do this.
Okay, that's what we will go with. We will have the surveyors come out and survey it. Okay, and now, we're not quote that. So, the road on Ninety-third Street Southwest, it'd be, it'd be Dave Kudelski's road. I don't like to assign names to roads because then they just get associated with one person. So, it's Ninety-third Street Southwest. So, I don't know if you guys are fully aware of that. There was a huge legal battle over where the section line markers were. I mean, it went all the way to the Supreme Court. So, when the surveyors went out, they started digging in, that's when they found out. There was a huge legal battle. They since marked the ones that the Supreme Court ruled on, so they should be the final ones. So, they found the center of the section line, essentially. So, I think at this point, we should probably just bring in the adjoining landowners. And if we wanna do something down there, have them all sign a piece of paper, a lease or something. And if we're gonna do something down there, that way they can never come back. I mean, with the, with the way they have it staked now, some of those utility poles will be in the way. So, that's a pretty, you know, if we wanna go that route and move all those and stuff like that, that's a bigger process, so...
Taxing here, how much?
I think the best thing we could do is probably work on it this winter. Obviously, nothing's gonna get done this, this spring or this fall yet, because we just don't have the time or the manpower to even tackle that road now. So, I think the best thing to do is just bring everybody in and get a best plan of action on that road.
Square it all the way so we can possibly do something in there?
Yeah, if that's the, if that's the route the commissioners wanna go, if we wanna work on that road, then we need to start squaring it away. We have most, all winter to do it, so that'll help a lot. That'll be four, five, six meetings we can address issues with at our eyes, so...
Well, I would say, just from talking to you about it too, with the issue with the center lines and all those different things, that I think you'd have to have all the landowners on board before you even decide what you were gonna do. Because like you said, if you have everybody on board, then maybe, like you said, we could maybe just raise three hundred feet of it. That's the baddest problem. Instead of rebuilding the entire road, or maybe there's a spot where the utilities aren't in the way that we can at least cut some backs over there, or just try and improve the best we can about turning it into, like you said, moving utilities and, you know, and going too far. Maybe that's not what it means at all. So, I would say getting the landowners on board would be the first step before we can even... Because you need to go and start advising a plan, find out one guy's not on board, he's not gonna borrow you any dirt or wants you to do anything, and then that kind of puts it out of stance though, too, so...
Yep, and as the last commission meeting, I think there's quite a few of them on board out there, but we just wanna make sure that they're...
I think, yeah, it didn't seem like you were gonna have any trouble getting adjoining landowners to, you know, participate or let me access their land or whatever, so... I'd say, yeah, that'd probably be a good idea, just put on a list for like a continuation, try and get all the ducks in a row this winter, put something together for spring or summer or something like that.
Okay. So, who found out there was a legal battle? Was that that engineer or what?
Yeah, when they started looking into it, trying to find the section line corners and stuff like that, they they actually called me and said there was a, you know, they were trying to find out which one they should go with. And they were like, "It's a huge legal battle over there, so..." And hopefully this doesn't stir up old...
Old ruins.
Old ruins or anything like that, so...
Yeah.
The county's just trying to do it by the book and the right way to do it, so that's why we're with that, so... Okay. So, gravel crushing progress up at the Wobom pit. As this afternoon, they called me, or the day before the meeting. They have about forty thousand yards on the ground already. We've been sampling it, started out sampling pretty frequently. Now we've knocked it back a little bit because that's a cost to us. All, all, all tests have been coming back. They've been passing. We had one at the very start that didn't pass, but that was sampling. Problem with the sampling. Um, we don't do the tests in-house. We take it at, it's actually Terricon, that does our lab tests, so they, they do all the lab tests, so...
So, what class is it?
It's Class thirteen spec, so... So, they've been passing. Our contract with Fisher Industries states a hundred and forty-five thousand plus or minus yards. With their testing up there and everything like that, they're kind of estimating that we might be closer to the two hundred thousand cubic yards.
Wow.
And then that pit will be mined out completely over with. So, I guess I'm just trying to get some clarification on what you guys wanna do with cluster mowers. Do we wanna go all the way up to two hundred thousand yards? It's, it's very reasonably priced gravel crushing. We probably won't get this again.
Well, I think we said we'd take everything he's got to the one.
Well, I think the one thing to consider is that, I think if I remember right, we're paying three to four dollars a yard or less than we normally pay to crush gravel on this because there was so much and they had so much going on. And that included the royalty, so honestly, when you think about it, we're basically crushing for half price of anything else. So, we've crushed since I've been here.
Plus, they're willing to spread that out, whoever cares.
Right, and the payment plan too, is that they were willing to take multiple payments. Like, we could pay some this year, some next year, and I think it was actually two years for sure, about three. I have to look at the contract again, because it's been about a year, but... I think, I think you'd be hard pressed to turn it down, just with the conversations we've had before on gravel. I mean, we do have money in the permit fund and there's other funding options coming through. Like we talked about with the Prairie Dug, we have that house built fifteen oh five. I mean, that's almost every road and gravel maintenance. You got the crushers there crushing, you know, and probably not having a pit in the northern area for a while, you know? I mean, even like we talked about with this other, you know, the Schlitten Hard thing might not even turn out. And then now you're going, "Gosh, we should have crushed that extra forty thousand yards or whatever that might be up there." I mean, especially at the price it's at. It'd be different if you were paying a price you already didn't feel like you could afford, but we're, in my mind, we're getting a deal, so...
Plus, I'm sure we need even more time, give us more time, too.
Well, they've been very good with us, and even, even the Wobom family has already said that, I mean, we can, they'll sign whatever agreement they wanna work with us, but, you know, so, I mean, we have a, we have a willing landowner with a willing contractor at a price that's pretty reasonable. I'd say, yeah, at this point, I mean, we should probably put a cap on it. But I mean, like you said, if they're saying two hundred thousand at the most, it probably won't, won't be even that much to me, but... We're already at one forty or one fifty, going another twenty, thirty thousand yards or something, I would say we probably have to do it.
So, do we wanna cap it at two hundred thousand cubic yards? And if it comes in under that, we're great, it's...
If it comes over that, you might as well get whatever we can.
Yeah, I mean, it's hard to say no to it, just because like you said, with gravel being the way it is, we have the landowner agreements and we have the contractor agreements. And it's probably the best deal we have in the whole county. It'd be pretty tough to turn it down. I'd say at this point, let it, let it crush and see where it comes out. As soon as you start finding out, you know, start letting us know, not that we get surprised with some ridiculous thing. But, yeah, I mean, I would, I would keep it, maybe just a number in your mind, and maybe like one seventy-five. Because that, we're splitting the difference from where we agreed to where they think it is. If it starts getting way over that, we should probably either maybe have a special leader just to make sure, not that we're getting ambushed with a huge bill, but...
Okay, that's what...
I would say between that one forty and one seventy-five, I think we're all probably pretty comfortable with anything over that. We should probably meet, that sounds reasonable.
Okay, yep.
Okay.
What's for me?
It's Paul Katie's road. There's that washout there, yeah, on the shoulder of the road. It's washed out there. That's a culvert, I believe, is gone.
No, the culvert's there, just a little bit of water just ran on top of the road and washed it down, because...
But is that on your list to get fixed this fall yet or?
We're trying, but the Kelch project takes, or the Twenty-first Avenue takes up a big portion of that, so... We're, we're trying. We're gonna, we're trying to make it happen. Because there's a few other culverts out there that need to be... 'Cause there's a few other culverts out there that need to be placed up this year, so. And roads that need to be bladed, and more gravel that needs to be hauled.
Yeah, but this is the worst one, and that's been since last fall, when they had that heavy rain, it's only actually washed out. We had that ten inch rain.
And you're talking on Tenth Avenue there?
Yes, I believe so.
Yeah, well, that's we'll, we'll work on it, we'll get her.
Okay, 'cause that, that's on the dangerous side, if, uh, somebody knocked the stakes down. And, uh, I'm glad I came along when I did and put it back up. So, that's the story there, and I don't know if Paul uses that road. See, he, he goes, he, he can go south to get up on Highway thirty-four. So, I think he's been taking that route, it's not any farther for him. But, uh, last time I talked to him, he's, he's ready to get it fixed, 'cause he's got kids driving down on that road to get to school.
Okay, we'll put it higher up on the priority list then.
Sounds good.
So ADA stream water pumping, we've finished pumping that water, obviously pumped it down as far as, um. Now talking with the surveyors, they come out and put us marks where the culvert should be, um, they're actually gonna be in the rip rap, so. They're only like forty-eight feet long, culverts, so, uh, we have yet to find them. Uh, we, the Kels project took priority over just finding the ends of those culverts, so after the Kels project's over, then we're gonna move back over there and
So you don't know if they're cement or steel yet?
No.
Okay. I think they're steel. I think so.
Conflict of interest on whether they were
We're gonna, we're gonna come to a resolution eventually.
Yeah, so, but they're gonna be short, so the, we're gonna have to open that, if our plan of action is just to open and find the ends of them, and see what their conditions there.
They got the water down below the culvert, I think, I think, right?
Yeah, we believe so, yes, because there's no known elevation of those culverts, uh, because they were put back in the fifties, fifty-six, I believe, the original plans are from. Uh, there's no elevation, they can't give us an exact elevation, 'cause they used a different system or something like that, so. Best way to do it is, we're just gonna locate them, we're just gonna have to move some of the rip rap and dig down and keep going until we find them, so.
Speaking of ADA, with all those delinier signs along there, what's the plan for eliminating all the weeds that are in there, because that road will hold a lot of snow coming off of the ice?
Well, we should've sprayed them.
That's not my property, I was just wondering. You mean the county should've sprayed them?
Yeah, and the weed boards.
Yeah, that's
Part of the
You know how tall they are, yeah, something's gonna have to be done with that. Would it be advisable to torch it later in the fall, take a, a torch and walk through there and burn that all down?
We can look into that.
You're gonna have to get rid of them, because they're gonna hold snow when it blows across that ice.
What are you talking about, you're talking about ADA, they're like
The mountains.
The emergency razor there, kinda?
Yeah.
We got them safe, we got them safe out there, okay?
They're at least this tall, between those delineer signs along the shoulder.
What about by Burghat, with that?
I don't, I don't know out there.
On the west side?
Same thing, I mean, now, those, those two spots of roads are horrible for snow removal, because all those, oh yeah, markers are there, and stuff like that, so.
I, I would suggest if you could have a, a torch in the fall and just burn it clean, I think that's your best bet. 'Cause those weeds are gonna hold snow, they did last year, soon as it would blow, that was my main concern, is that lake gonna be blocked off? So, just thought I'd address that as well, when you were talking about ADA.
Better get a mow or something at least.
You can't, it's, it's, it's tough, you get between all them signs, and then there's, you know, the rocks on the shoulders, you know, it's gonna, I think it's gonna have to be burned out.
Yeah, that'll catch snow for sure.
Yep, so, yeah, we'll, we'll look into that, yes. Um, so, yeah. So, yeah, obviously ADA Street, those culverts are gonna be short on that road, so, just gonna open them up, find them, and devise a plan of action after that, so.
And the one you put in as a, as a, for the pipe, you're gonna leave that in?
No, that's
That should eventually come out again?
That'll be coming up, yeah.
Okay.
It was more important to get to Twenty First Avenue than that culvert not hurt it.
Right. No, you had to get to Twenty First, so, I mean, that's, we all agreed on that, so.
And, I guess that's pretty much everything I have.
How about, how about Eighth Avenue, how, how's that coming, what, did you go down and look at that again, or?
Eighth Avenue, uh, yeah, we're gonna, I got a call, I think, I believe you called me and said that there was a call, we, we bladed it, and we're gonna have to put a little bit of gravel on that spot. We're not gonna gravel the first mile, mile and a half, because that's turning out pretty good, so the last mile and a half, mile. Little sand years and stuff in there, so, uh, we were hoping the traffic would
Back it down.
Back it down and help out, and we were hoping Mother Nature would allow it to rain once, and that'd help. That'd help it out too, so, but, uh, yeah, we bladed it this morning, and our plan of action is to get some gravel put on those spots. We're not gonna go very heavy, because there is gravel on that road, just make it a little bit better for travel. That, everything sound okay with doing that?
Yeah. On the, on the last special meeting, there was a motion made, and in that motion, one of the requests was that, that Dave be put on a new route, has that taken place?
Uh, there was a motion, it was a suggestion, um.
I think it was part of the motion.
Well, it was just a suggestion.
Oh, okay.
And, uh, no, he has not been put on a new route, and I will not put him on a new route. That is, as the department head, um, I don't see that it's necessary to move him out of his route, everybody's happy with him, he knows his route. Not gonna let a new blade operator try to learn a route before winter time. So, that buck stops with me on that issue, unless you guys have anything else you wanna add to that.
Well, I actually got a couple of calls from people that kinda reiterated the same thing, so, I mean. I don't think it's a bad idea, but I did get calls from other people that wanted, didn't want him to leave, and then I actually had calls from two other people, one from David Ellingson's route, one from Cody Renner's route, that said they wanna keep their blade guys, so, I mean, so I, right?
I think all of those
Like I said, I, I
Most of those people down there are pretty happy with what
Right, but I'd just say, I did get calls from actually other people that didn't also wanna lose their blade operator, which I took as a compliment, they both commented that their blade operator was doing a good job, and that they wanted to keep him, so.
I know the Westfield people like Cody Renner, not, right?
Well, that's, I got calls for Cody and for Dave Ellison, actually, I can't deal with them with compliments, I got that he's actually doing pretty good out there too, so. I guess if anything continues, if there's any other issue like that, where Dave's blade in his area who comes in trouble, oh, then it's, it's gonna get visited.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's not gonna
We have a, we have a repeat of this issue, 'cause the one thing about it is, is just a guy blading in his home area, he's probably just got more temptation to do things than a guy that doesn't, so.
I don't think that he'll be taking the motorator home ever again.
Well, I know, but just, I, I think, just to respect for the situation, though, I just, um, I do understand where you're coming from too, but, um. You know, he's gonna be under heavy scrutiny, so.
Oh, we're under heavy scrutiny every day.
Well, so, you know, I mean, it's, it's not all undeserved either, though, so just remember that, so.
No, and I take full, full responsibility on the action. As of the road department, we consider the matter closed, but we sat through the special meeting, we got our disciplinary actions, and we're moving onward and upward, so.
Sure. Fair enough to me, moving on, sounds like a plan.
So I guess if we wanna address another thing, is it, um, Mr. Ford said, why did I bring the paving on Sixth Avenue up? Well, that was because that road's scheduled or slotted to get reconstructed and remilled and overlaid next year or the year after. That was the decision to bring it forth, so we could decide if we wanted to spend the money on paving it or not. That's why it was brought forth to the county.
You're talking about the one, the road that goes out of Gulf?
Correct.
Well, I can tell you as somebody that that's in my district, I mean, it's one thing to patch it up seasonally, or because we couldn't get someone to do it or something, it's fine, but that road was in terrible shape there, and that
Oh, absolutely.
I mean, there's no guarantee we overlay that road next year either, so in, in the meantime, that one had to get patched, so, that's
Absolutely, and that's why we did brought it forth to the meeting, so, 'cause that's not money well spent if we're gonna patch it, and then two months later, mill and overlay, that's money not well spent. To address Ninety-Eighth Av- Ninety-Eighth Avenue, that road's good for now thirty years, or more or less, depending on how the maintenance is on it.
Fair enough.
And that, that road is more than built to, I mean, we don't even have enough gravel on there to make our stand, like the standard that every county and engineering firm and every guidebook comes out there, people think it's a lot of gravel, 'cause they heard the number. Not really a lot of gravel, they do their homework, not a lot of gravel on that road. I don't understand why everybody in this county's got such an issue with Ninety-Eighth Avenue. They've done a lot of work to other roads and nothing's been ever brought up, so.
Okay.
And, uh, just to address it, though, we got a lot of help from the landowners down there, and a lot of the landowners were very happy and pleased with it, so.
Well, I did actually get another call for a compliment on the approaches that you guys did, because they're harvesting down there, all the access with the approaches, it's, it says it's the best it's ever been, so. I was actually supposed to extend that compliment to David Crum, because he's the one that widened that approach, and I'm not sure which approach it was, I just got a call from the landlord that said, make sure to tell him thanks, 'cause the work that he did was good, so, that's what I'm hearing, so.
A lot of them out there on the other side of Highway done too, that extra two parts of mileage.
Well, I did get calls on that too, usually they're the same old call, so, so, yeah.
And right now, we do not plan on doing it down there for this year.
It might be a little further down priority list on things, but yeah, so.
So I believe that is everything I pretty much have, um. Yeah, I think that's pretty much
Did you get a chance to look at those other two roads I gave you a week ago?
Yeah, we bladed them.
Okay, okay, just wondering.
Yeah, I believe they were bladed, uh, Wednesday after, Wednesday last week.
Is one of them Fifty Seventh Street, up northwest of Hazleton?
Northwest, uh, one was northwest, yeah, up there by Auburn?
Yeah, like Joey Culver and all that other
Yeah, that was one of them.
That got bladed, okay.
And the other one was east of town here, about twelve, thirteen miles going south, yeah, I can't remember just
Was right on Nineteenth Avenue?
Nineteenth, yeah, I think that's what it was, yeah. About up by Evan Solder, did you look at that, out there, whatever he was talking about?
So that would be like, probably second or third avenue.
Eighty Second and Second Avenue?
Well, that was, that, that was up by Dumbie, 'cause that was what I told you, this would be south of Dells, probably two, three miles.
They were out there blading and gravel, and so it'd be more likely that they could have.
What about the bales in the ditch and stacks of hay and all that kind of stuff, are you, we really gonna go out there and tell the farmers that we're gonna add it on your taxes?
Well, since Dave's entry, go down with him, so. It's in the county, right, the way they have till, I believe, November?
October?
October fifteenth.
October fifteenth, is it, is it October fifteenth to remove the bales?
Is that the same as the ditch mowing, or is the ditch
Ditch mowing is October first.
See, that's, somebody called me the other day, and I thought they were both the same, but they are, too. I told him October first, so at least I was right there.
Well, if I do mow it on the first, and I wanna hay and bale it, be hard to haul the same bale, I mean
I know, we shouldn't be hay and baling on dang good mine, I'm just gonna say it.
Wouldn't you, you guys manage ditches, yeah?
Yeah, we started with our Federal eight roads, and then once we've done with all our Federal eight roads, then we go back and start looking for
Other roads.
Roads that have not been mowed yet, and tell them we're mowed really early and it grew a little bit more, so. I mean, there's that fine line of, do we charge them for it? They did mow it, but.
I think the big thing to focus on with that are the ones that just haven't been mowed, that are six feet tall, I mean, those are, I mean
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I think some of them that have been mowed already, that most likely guys were out clipping this weekend, I seen a lot of guys this past weekend out with me, I was out the weekend before, even, I mean, I had some stuff that it was all good, except the alfalfa, the weeds had grown, you know, so just, I wasn't broke here for most of it, but I've just trimmed it out, so. That stuff will probably get taken care of all the time, it's more so just the, there's some stuff out there every once in a while, you know, to where it hasn't been touched all summer, those are, those are bad.
Yeah, and I mean, if the farmers are out mowing it, or the landowners, I should say, are out mowing it, and there is a windrow on one side, just let us know, and we're gonna, we'll try to, if it isn't taken care of, we'll, we'll get to it, like, let us know, let's work together on those.
I don't know, is there a lot of bales in the ditch though?
There's some.
'Cause I haven't seen a lot, though, I mean, like, most guys up in close are off.
Well, like, uh, room cover's called the other day, and he says, we're chalking for, he says, we, could you wait three, four days, and I said, go ahead, I mean, go.
Well, I mean, it'll take a while to do it all, and like, the county doesn't wanna drive around and mark bales and tell the people to do that, like, it's just an added expense and time for the county employees to do that, so. We were, we're, it's the landowner's responsibility to take care of this stuff, so we don't wanna go out and do this.
It's not like we're out on the fifteenth at nine AM, like opening deer season, you know, road ditches, and so, yeah.
There's, there's one road by Tom Schaefer down there, I think I told you about that?
Yeah.
You guys cut the one to the north, but he was talking about the one to the south, and I don't think they opened that road in the winter anyway.
We, we, we cut it?
No, he didn't cut it, he moved gravel from one side to the other, whatever, so he could cut it, but it's one to the south again, but I know in the winter time, they don't open that road anyway, yeah, he was in here that one year, remember that? When he was in here, and, and they had a video of him, or the county coming cutting the ditches, the county couldn't cut it.
Well, I don't think I was here that year, 'cause I don't remember that.
I remember that.
Might've been before my time.
So it's Solder's House a mile?
One, yeah, South Bis House a mile, then it goes eastwards.
And it goes eastwards.
Yeah, it's probably not a, well
No.
It's one of those, we've bladed once or twice a year, and that's what you end up with.
But, yeah, there's big stuff there, but, you know, he doesn't wanna get caught paying a fine for mowing it, or get put on his taxes. But they close that road pretty much in the winter anyway, so, I mean, just so you're aware of that, or whatever.
Yeah, so, uh, I mean, yet, we're in this split in airs here, so.
Yeah, well, I mean, like, this stuff, I mean, the most egregious ones are the ones that just haven't been touched all year, most of these haven't been hayed once or twice, I mean, you can give the benefit of the doubt, and, you know, maybe, maybe in the middle of October here, they'll get out and clip them or something, or maybe just a friendly warning from the blade guy to tell them to go out and trim it up a little bit or something, I mean. There's things like that we can work on, I mean, we don't, our goal's not to find people and get people in trouble, our goal's to get ditches mowed, so I think we all agree with that, so.
Oh, absolutely, like I said
Do our best to try and work with everybody, and I, I, I drive around, I think most of the ditches are pretty good shape, it's not like you run into a lot of ditches that haven't been mowed, I mean, obviously twenty miles worth seems like a lot, but in the grand scheme of the whole county, it's, you know, most of them are, most guys are haying them usually, at least, or their neighbors are, so, but yeah.
Same with, like I said, the county doesn't wanna go out and mow ditches.
No.
We don't, we're not looking for that money to, you know, so we, 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 we want the landowners to do it.
Yeah.
The, the fine is just an incentive, so they get out there and do it, so.
We got a call at two thirty here, so, I guess if, I mean, if there's anything else.
I, I think I've finished up.
Okay, does he have a statement?
Well, if he wants to stay, it's fine, I'm just saying that we have a call at two thirty, I'm gonna hit Bob Bowman, so. Stay, stay, whatever, just, we need to
Is it a road issue?
I have no idea, I guess the just in general, I guess.
More than likely.
Well, I would kinda assume it'd be about anything else, I guess, I don't know. He asked for agenda time, the commissioner's abiding, so at two thirty, he's gonna be calling, so.
There it is.
He's more than worthy. Hello?
Hi, this is Bob Bowman.
Okay, Bob, this is Chairman Maygrom, uh, we're actually right on time, so, uh, the floor is yours, you better be ready.
Okay, I just got, yeah, a couple of quick questions for you, but, you know, there's been a lot of controversy over these roads and stuff, and uh, first one is for Aaron Maygrom, well after you were notified of the Ninety-Eighth Street project going on, and people were asking questions, you sent an email to John and Billy Bungartner saying there's no project going on down there, and it appears you're just flat out lying to the taxpayers, and I, I would like to give you a minute to explain yourself as to why you would do that.
Yes, certainly, um, well, we just actually explained it to Skylar in this meeting here in DePaul Firth. Uh, when Ninety-Eighth Street had began, originally David Crum was gonna be pulling shoulders, and they were gonna be adding gravel, and, um, I actually drove the road after David had pulled the shoulders, and I felt like it was a little rough, and so at the next meeting, I asked if they were done. David and Skylar said that they had a little more work to do, and my assumption was that they were just gonna be probably reblading it, graveling it, doing a little more work.
they were just gonna be probably reblading it and graveling it and doing a little more work. And then after that, the further they went, the more trouble they found, they found some culverts that were bad, and so they decided to go a little further than than really they had told us or that we had really agreed to, so I was totally truthful in my responses, I was not lying, I just, there was a miscommunication there, and by the time I found out what had actually happened, it was basically already being done, so I absolutely did not lie at all about it, I was it was a miscommunication and we've talked about it and there's really nothing else to address.
So would you agree that about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar job is a pretty big miscommunication?
I would disagree that it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Well, it was over a hundred and, a hundred and seven loads of gravel and all this, I mean, that that's just whatever, I don't wanna spend my time on that, it was it was a lot of money.
Well, I don't disagree with that, road projects are expensive no matter how, so I'm no doubt about it, but that decision was definitely within the purview of the road superintendent and the road department, uh, but we've all agreed that that was a miscommunication, and going forward, we are we've already relayed to Skyler that we expect him to probably bring us, uh, multiple projects on some kind of a list, whether that's five jobs, ten jobs, whatever, and then a a rough estimate as far as equipment, hours, possible materials, so that we can make better decisions like that, because we didn't vote on that project as a commission, true, but that also we feel like the project wasn't really a totally bad thing, other than just that it was Ninety-Eighth Street and not some other road somewhere, so.
Okay, is it true that the whole project was gonna, there's one point six miles done? Was it originally gonna be more, like another mile or two going east and a mile going west? Is that true or false?
That's false, there was, I believe, another mile to the east that was gravelled and the shoulders were pulled, just like that was agreed.
Originally, originally, we, we, uh, you know, I was informed that that was all gonna happen until we got rained in, but anyway, I gotta move on here, I don't have much time. Leonard, I just wanna have the record kinda clear out here that, um, originally, get to our private drive that we talked about, um, a lot of people still think I was like asking money for our private road to be fixed, and for the most part, the road itself, the riprap on both sides is done, on the private part going into our farm, I mean, people touch up working gravel, but that's done. And what was in question for the last six months or a year was just the section line, county owned road leading up to our drive, which still isn't done, we've done some work on that ourselves, but can you just confirm that that's accurate, what I just said?
Yeah, I believe that is, uh, that roughly that four hundred feet or so of section line belongs to the county. And.
Yeah, and I just, I just want, yeah, I just wanna make it clear that that is county road, cause people think, some people think I'm still asking for a private road to be built, and that that's been off the table for like a year or whatever, if you were taking, right?
Right, that is correct.
Yeah, okay, all right. And, um, and one other thing on that regarding that road, I don't think even, uh, Mr. Commissioner Everly was aware of this, but for, let's say about the first year after the flood, I had a very clear understanding from Francis Crum and yourself that our road would be fixed totally, you know, like it always was before. And then as time went on, it kinda graduated into, well, if we can get to it, we don't have time and and that kinda stuff, and, uh, but for about the first year after it flooded, because when we built the FEMA road, you guys were gonna take clay out of our pasture, pay us a little bit, you know, just two dollars a yard, and then the understanding was that our road, we would not receive money for the clay used there, but it would be fixed. Is that all correct and accurate?
Who was that question directed toward, Bob?
I don't, Leonard Weigle, we had the same understa- I just wanted to be on the record that, um, for the first year after the flood, it was understood by us, Bowman, that the road would be fixed, correct?
Well, we did talk about taking some clay out of your your property to help fix the road.
Yeah, the the clay for the FEMA road was gonna get like four bucks a yard and then the clay used on our private, on our road going from the mailbox to our farm, we would, they were gonna fix the road, but we would not be paid for it. But it would be fixed, that was the understanding, correct?
I believe that was correct, we did talk about using the clay out of your property, but then when they came into the archaeology study, we weren't allowed to use it anymore, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Right, then we had to go, then we had to go find it somewhere else.
Pardon me?
Then we had to go find the clay somewhere else.
Right, and then we got it from Leo Rourke, but my point was for that first year, all the roads were gonna be fixed, the FEMA road, which was done, and our road, it was understood that that would be fixed completely, and then later we got into, well, you do half and we'll do half, and and then it got worse from there, because to this day, to this, to this day, the section line still isn't fixed, but it mo- most of it is, but that's I just wanted to have everybody, I wanted that on the record to be aware of that.
Well, I guess my question would be was who was we with the understanding though, because I wasn't a part of that understanding ever, so.
When I say we, I'm talking about Francis Crum, myself, and Leonard.
Okay.
It was, it was well understood that our road.
And that was only if time would allow, they, they had to do their FEMA project first on the, on the Eighty-Eighth Street.
Right, yeah, and then after that, while the equipment was there, because the specific thing that's figured out is we were gonna be paid for the clay used on the FEMA road, but not for our for for the rest of the road going down.
I believe that is what was said at the time, yes.
Okay, thank you. Now, Everly, I got a question for you, did you know that the road job on Ninety-Eighth was gonna be done?
No, I did not.
Before? Did you call some of the neighbors and tell them to hate their ditches? Because there's gonna be a road project done on Ninety-Eighth?
Uh, yes, I did.
Okay, you just said you didn't know about it, then how did you, how did you know? It can't be both. You can't say you didn't know and then call neighbors and tell them to hate ditches because there's gonna be a road project done, why are you lying?
I am not lying, I'm just saying that it was not a really a road project, it was pulling up the road, he was gonna pull up the shoulders like he always did. So David Crum had called me and asked me, he said, I would like to pull up that road, I've, I pulled up a bunch back by the crick, and he said, I wanna pull up that road if it's possible, if I could get the farmers to cut the hay, so you don't have to mess with the hay. I said, sure, so I called all the farmers and asked them if they could remove the hay so we could pull up that road. And that's how that went.
So you did know there, I did know there was gonna be a project, I mean, I told you again, it's easy, you just didn't know to what extent, is that right?
Well, I just knew you wanted to pull up the road, yes.
Okay, all right. Uh, another question is, I have a, yes, you put your thinking caps on here now for a minute, um, the county road leading to our private property, uh, as of about two years ago, it was completely gone, I mean, private citizens came, so we have a road there now that we can use, but but you guys did not build that road or or do any, anything, it didn't cost one penny to do that, um, can you think of, there's gotta be five or ten or dozen people in the county that do not have a road? A county road that leads to a private drive? We can't be the only ones, and I'm asking, if you can think of anybody else in the county that has absolutely no road leading to their private residence, because I don't know of any others, and there might be some, and I just might not know, can you guys give me any names?
There's a lot of them.
Not, not new construction, because new construction is different, or somebody like, you know, Trinowski built a house. Not new construction, I'm talking about old property, property that have been there forever. Is there anybody that has absolutely no county road access to a private drive leading up to their place, other than Florian Bowman?
Well, I'm sure there is.
Who?
Well, I don't, I don't know, all they have to, let me know.
I don't either, and the reason I'm asking is because I think you were singled out, and I think you guys discriminated against him, because I heard somebody make the comment, how long is he gonna be there and who's gonna live there when he's not there? And to me, that's age discrimination, if my dad was thirty years old and was milking cows and had kids in school, like when I was little, the school bus and the milk truck got in there, that road would have been fixed. He's eighty years old now.
Okay, I.
So you're making comments or somebody did, how long is he gonna be there? That's beside the point. He wants to live there, you treat him like you treat everybody else. So I want some names of who else in the county, or even one name, who doesn't have a a road to their private property?
Well, I think, I think the better question would be, Bob, is that who doesn't have a road, or who has a road that's surrounded by a lake that floods every ten years as well too, because that's part of the conversation is not whether or not who lives on that farm, but whether or not you can afford to fix that road every ten years like the county has done, and that's the whole crux of the argument, Bob, is just who's responsible for restoring access to this lake every ten years? So you don't get to, now, Bob, you don't get to interrupt the chairman, I'm gonna tell you right now, you admitted already that the road flooded in ninety-seven. Somewhere around ninety-seven, we all, almost everything flooded ninety-seven. It flooded again somewhere in the neighborhood of oh-seven, oh-nine, which was another bad winter slash spring, that's roughly ten to twelve years, and it flooded again in twenty seventeen through twenty nineteen, give or take a little bit, so, since nineteen ninety-seven to twenty twenty-two is twenty-five years and it's flooded three times. So, so my point is, Bob, is you are trying to label it as discrimination, whereas commissioners were trying to make the best decisions possible on what the value assigned to this road is versus who should be paying for it, we can't always just go out and rebuild the road at no cost to someone, and you gotta talk about the investment if it's gonna wash away, and the other thing that you've neglected to make known is in this entire argument from the last two years, we had a surveyor go out and survey the elevation of Florian's first level or main level of his house. And we had actually discussed building that section line up to that elevation, so that way, the next time that road went underwater, the entire farm would go underwater, therefore rendering it useless. That way you don't have a situation where you have a useful farm and an unusable road. You disagreed with that because you didn't wanna build your private drive up to that elevation, you felt it was a waste and there was gonna be a big hill in that point. That was a part of the discussion, now, it's not on video, because we weren't videoing those meetings, and you can deny it if you want, but I have the paperwork at home to prove that we had those numbers crunched and that that was a part of a discussion, and you refused to do any cost sharing on that or acknowledge any kind of a plan that way, and you said it was a waste. So, to come around and act like we have never offered a solution for this road, ever, we've never negotiated over dozens of meetings, which you've participated in, and you wanna continue to try and blackball this commission and act like this is some circus, when the fact of the matter is, is you've been the one that's created this circus by not wanting to participate in any way, shape, or form, other than you get a free road or you badmouth everybody that's participated with this, and that's where the truth lies, so you can say you want discrimination all you want, but it's just not true.
It it's not a, we didn't have discussions about that, to say I didn't wanna accept anything, that that's not accurate either, you guys, you guys offered to do a clay road without any riprap and charging me thirty-two thousand dollars. I said, that's ridiculous, without riprap, that road would be gone. You probably have all that documented here, I've been fully participating, and if you wanna still do that road or foot or whatever, yeah, that was part of the discussion. And if you wanna do that, still go ahead and do it, but yeah, there's been a lot of talk, and and I have been participating, fully participating all the time. I'll tell you something about economies of scale. I'll use the example of a post office, you can have a thousand post office people and employees right by the post office, either on a P O box or within walking distance, but if somebody lives way out by Cattail Bay or out by the river, and it's, I don't know, twenty, thirty miles, the farthest distance you gotta go, the post office still is obligated to service that customer. So if somebody lives in a crappy area where there's water, in my example, it's no different, as a, you know, steward of the county, you have to take care of that person, the same, treating the same. I understand, there's water there and it could flood, of course, but to, you know, they're not do do anything for three years, and then on top of it, to take it one step further, when you did say you were gonna come out and do one side of it, why you wouldn't do the other riprap, I don't know.
Cause you demanded that, I'm gonna stop you there, Bob, no, no, I'm not gonna continue with this. You said you only wanted that side, we even disagreed with it, and Francis disagreed with it, this you're changing the words, you're changing the negotiation out of it, that is completely unfair, and to make it sound like, yeah, this whole thing needs to continue, and now you're gonna just change the discussions and change the narrative, it's not fair, it's unbecoming in this whole situation, and it's just, it's gotta stop, because you have not, you not.
You never offered to mix the east side, the riprap, the east side of that.
Yeah, we did, but we, we never offered, no, Bob, we never offered to riprap it at its current elevation, because we knew it would probably flood again. That's the whole crux of the argument, we were going to build it up four feet out of rock, both sides, everything was gonna get built up, it was gonna be the final road to be built, and you disagreed with it, and from there on, we agreed that we didn't wanna participate because that was not the right way to do it. You wanted to sever on several.
Never one of the, that was one of the routes to go out of main, through main.
Route that we felt comfortable investing in, every other route we felt was a waste, that's the truth of the situation, and that's why we came to this end pass. You wanted your ideas, you wanted to not pay for them, and you wanted us to be on the hook for them, and it failed, because then we were in trouble, just like we are now. We're on the hook for a project we didn't even wanna do. Now you wanna go and say we did it halfway, we didn't properly build it, but no one here really wanted to do it. They agreed to do it because frankly, I think they were just tired of negotiating with you, and I voted against that too, as even on the record, because if we weren't gonna build it up properly, where it would never flood again, or where it would be easily rebuildable, if it did, it wasn't worth doing. And that was the case we all landed on.
And that's why we signed that letter.
And that's why we signed that letter, it's a good point, that's why we signed the letter saying we weren't gonna do anything ever again, because dealing with you on this project was impossible. We knew you were gonna come back again, and certainly this project, which wasn't a good idea, was built, and it flooded immediately in the spring, failed again, and now here you are, we're at the same boat, so that's where this thing has all landed, but Bob.
You, you made me sign a piece of paper, and you went out there and you did half of the work intentionally.
Yeah, we're not, that's not true.
I told you, go look at it, you said, yep, I'm going to the chiropractor and strawberries, I looked at it, and then when I asked you, you said you did not look at it. Russ Waller did a great job, the same week, the road is still there, it didn't flood.
The road is, the section line road is still there, Bob, you, Bob, you're misrepresenting this deal too, their road is still there. You make it sound like the road is completely gone, and that's not the case, I went out and looked at it, so, Bob, this conversation.
Six foot hole, I can stand in there, I went out with a tape measure, and you seen the video, I'm standing there, the six foot hole, it ties my head there. Is that properly fixed?
It was properly fixed when we were done, and the water came up three feet after that and did exactly what we said it was gonna do, which was fail. And we told you that from the beginning, which is why we put the agreement in place, because we knew it was going to fail.
Aaron, he said that from a three feet.
Yeah, okay, Bob.
Russ Waller's road would have been gone too, and that's what, it's still there, it's particularly fine.
Yeah, and everything is just the county's fault, Bob, it's, this is the same conversation we have over and over with you. From now on, you're gonna have to attend in person, because it's too convenient for you to sit two states away and just hurl flaming arrows at us all the time, it's not right. You're misre- you're misrepre- you're misrepresenting the facts. You're taking advantage of the situation, no.
I invite anybody listening, I'm here, drive out and look at it, you can see where Russ Waller did it correctly, and where you had Francis and Dave Crum, I think, did the job.
Yeah.
And 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 that's another thing, I was.
No, Bob, Bob, your time is up here, we're not gonna let you continue, you were allowed five minutes, we've given you ten, we're not gonna let you carry on like this, so you you don't have a specific topic to talk about anymore, and we're moving on, so we're gonna have to end this conversation.
I'm just gonna invite the people listening, if anybody wants to go out and look for themselves, they can still see it, or look at my.
They're more than one, two, three, four. Yep, thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Yep, bye.
Can I clarify something really quickly on Ninety-Eighth Street?
Sure.
Thinking back when I was uh, when I said it wasn't the standards, that road is to standards, our standard width of twenty-four feet and everything like that, where it doesn't meet quite the standards of every guideline is in the gravel. Most, everywhere it talks about five and a half inches of gravel, we're at like three there, we did that because it's not a very high traffic road, so. It, road is built to standard and everything like that, the only spot it is, it's just lacking in the gravel, I just wanted to clear that up, because someone's gonna re-watch this video, and they're like, hey, they didn't even build it to standard, so that's.
Well, what you're saying is basically it was supposed to be four to five inches of gravel on there, you have roughly two to three.
Yeah, just because we didn't put as much gravel on it, because we knew it was a low traffic road, so. That's, I just wanted to clarify that, so. Anyway, watching the video, whatever. That would end up on Facebook, but we did build it to that.
Well, one thing I do wanna address too is there's no evidence that it cost a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, so it's. I looked at the open records request that they provided to Bob who asked for it, it said forty-seven thousand. Is everything calculated perfectly, I don't know, and could you argue some of the rates are different, so even if you expanded it, went somewhere between the neighborhood of forty thousand and sixty thousand, even seventy thousand, it's nowhere near.
But that's like, it's like, that's like any road we do, like on Eighth Avenue, you probably got more than that on that road by the time we get done, I mean, it's just what it costs.
Well, I just wanted to clarify that, I don't wanna, we don't need to bring it back up.
No, that's fine, but there's just to clarify that, just, there's just no such thing as a two-road project, that's why a decision needs to be made, and that's why, getting back to what we talked about before, from now on, I know we meant it to just be shoulder pulling, and that's always kind of unacceptable, so that's fine, but we need to make sure that we're. But we need to make sure that we're picking the right roads, picking the best roads and and have an idea of what we're getting into.
Well, I think like David pulling shoulders, he doesn't have to come and tell us.
No, no.
No, we're not gonna do that. If we do a major reconstruction like that.
Once we hit a point though.
I don't even know if I consider that a major reconstruction.
It's nice to know because you got people always contacting you and test. So it's just nice to know if it's more than just pulling shoulders or something.
There's, there's no argument that that turned into a project. There's no argument. I mean, that's not general arguments. I'm not disputing that and I don't disagree with that. But the theory that we somehow voted on it or that we all agreed we were gonna do on it, it was a maintenance thing that turned into a project. And the point is, is when you get to that where it's transitioning, you probably should have just hit the brakes, made sure we were all on the same page or probably went to a point where you could have stopped. And, you know, I mean, once you hit one call where it's like, okay, what are we gonna do here? Are we gonna keep going as hard?
That's kinda hard to do too for a road supervisor. He's in the middle of a project.
I know, but in the middle of the project, you can still pick up the phone and contact the chairman or you. That's your district. Hey, Commissioner Everly, this thing is turning into a monster. What do you think we should do? Hey, maybe I'll call the chairman, maybe I'll call Leonard. If two, three really call, hey, you know what? I don't think anybody feels comfortable. Maybe we should have a special meeting and decide. Yeah, that's my point is that you can't go, oh, there isn't a meeting for two weeks. So we're gonna just blaze ahead with something that nobody was expecting. Cause what happened is, is we got blindsided. Now, I will say, I think Ninety-Eighth turned out really nice. I think if it was almost any other road than Ninety-Eighth, we wouldn't be talking about it. It just so happened that it happened to be in an area where people don't think it's important. And well, and Don's got property, so it looks like. But we didn't vote on it. It was, if any, it was a road superintendent decision with the road department. You trusted your guys, you went about it. And I don't have a problem with that. And I don't wanna condone the type of atmosphere where we're clipping wings every time some mistake gets made. Cause the fact of the matter is, is Ninety-Eighth is done. The money's in the road. It wasn't wasted. Now, was it, could it have been used in better places? Sure, you can argue that from one end of the earth. But we still rebuilt a mile and a half road, re-gravelled and pulled the shoulders on three miles of road. And now that piece of road is done. And one thing we've advocated, even when Francis was here and even before Nick, if you're gonna tear into something, you know, do it right and just be done with it. Don't come back two years later and cut callovers here and then come back and, you know, try and recede again. If you're there tearing it up, just finish it. So I, I really don't have a problem with the situation other than the communication should be better. But that's a process we're gonna evolve in with you being a new road superintendent too. And, you know, and and then that's just how it's gotta be, just in the future. Once you start getting to a point where it feels like this is like more than you intended, just have to pick up the phone and call somebody and at least let us know or, you know, we can maybe, like you said, have a small meeting, at least get together and go, you know what? We thought it was gonna take two days to cost ten grand, now it's gonna take two weeks and it costs fifty, sixty thousand. What do you guys think? And you can go move forward or I'd like to see you do this somewhere else, maybe cable this one for a year. That's the process that has to happen.
Okay, yeah, well.
But that being said, I, I think the work you guys did, I think it is fine.
I think did an excellent job on there. I think David does an excellent job in Allens Field, it's like, in my opinion.
As long as Skylar's here yet, Tom.
Yeah, we got time.
Yeah, I know. And I think, and I think you've got a call too from Mr. Hooman. I got a call last night from Larry.
No.
Well, he didn't call you?
He did talk to me. He talked to me about two weeks ago.
Regarding the three miles?
Yeah.
And I just told him that I would bring it up today and, you know, just discuss it. I think, I think Aaron's more aware of the, where this lies than I do. I mean, so.
It's three miles of section line north of Keith Hooman, so that would be.
Off the Tendrick Road, correct?
Right, that would have to be like Elf Avenue technically or.
Or Keith lives straight nori?
North and then there's.
Okay, but I know, uh, north of his place it goes, the road is good for a half mile or so and then it's.
When it turns?
Yeah.
And then that goes towards Stanley Newman and Earl Benedict's old place, we go north on the section line. That's what Larry, that's what Larry's talking about. We, we discussed it before and it, the, the problem with it is that specific section line is even worse than what you would call a typical section line. It's got several curves in it, it's very sandy soil. I mean, I know even when Nick was here and Nick wasn't afraid to tackle much, he didn't even wanna go in there because it, once you start cracking it open.
Are you aware of where it's located?
No, this is the first I'm hearing about anything on this road. Uh, what, what does he want? He wants a hill?
Yeah, he wants a blade it.
Well, he just wants a blade.
He wants to blade out some rough spots in there, but, you know, our policies.
It would be Sixteenth Avenue.
And I just told Mike bring it up.
Sixteenth Avenue southeast.
Yeah, sixteen, I believe it is, right?
Between sixty-eighth and seventy-first. So on Township on Thirty-four, range seventy-five west. And it's a, I mean, it's a fairly used section line. I think there's, I mean, cause I think, I think Hoomans themselves use it. I think Shicks might use it, the Gathers might use it. There's, I mean, and it's, there aren't a lot of roads in that territory, so that's why they use it a lot. But one thing I'll tell you, it doesn't run straight. So you don't know if you're on the right way or if you're on someone's land. And I just, I know even your older type road bosses who are.
There's no ditches, there's no.
I don't think it's, it's a two-track trail. It's basically just a prairie trail.
So no, we're not gonna do it.
Right, but they're more than welcome to take a box breaker there and do themselves.
Well, that's what we've always told them before.
I mean, if it means.
Well, there's problems all you have to do with that with the century code. They have to petition the commissioners to upgrade it. And they have all the landing, they're adjoining landowners to do it, um, like, so.
I mean, I don't have any problem with adjoining landowners, wanna go on a level of trail to make it drivable for themselves and stuff. But the, the other thing about it too is it's a difficult section line where it's, you have some curves and some elevation or a big blade, you just almost don't even belong in there. I mean, you'd be better off honestly to go through like we had talked about before. You build up a road, you maybe do a special scenario, you have everybody paid for it. You just build up a road in there and connect maybe sixty-eighth to seventy-first here, you know? Cause otherwise, I think what you'll end up doing is probably just doing more harm than good. You might appease one landowner, but upset the other two, cause it's worse now or you went into their land and it just, it's not a good scenario.
So we actually denied that last meeting, two on Fourth Avenue up there with that bridge. They wanted to, and we said no, they were, they were gonna do that. So it's not, this isn't a special case where we're saying no to them. Saying no to everybody, so.
I would have to concur with Skylar on that. Well, we have two and a half hours till we hear.
We're all done, right?
Do we wanna adjourn and come back in at five-thirty or?
Can we, can we do the bills?
Oh, yeah, we can do the bill. We can do whatever you want. I don't wanna adjourn, but at the same time, I wanna stand here for two hours.
We could go through the bills.
Yeah, let's go through the bills then, let's do that.
Okay, so there's nothing.
I don't believe there's anything else, Skylar, unless you got something.
Well, they've recovered everything, so. All right, thank you.
Thanks, Skylar. Two meetings on the road at three o'clock, come on.
So that's actually asking how he's doing on the road out there, carefuls. I think you said he got the engineer or who he had for that, saw the Gareon, the Gareon, the Gareon on that road bottom there. You know what I'm talking about, right? Like Gareon, the Gareon. And that road spot on that road, they were gonna rip rap it more than I'm.
Oh, yeah. That's on Nineteenth.
So it is.
Yeah. That hole's actually pretty good, waiting to allow it to water.
I think they, they're gonna rip that one until it's back. The Sarah Wolda, what does she do?
What's that?
Is Sarah Wolda, did they live in Bismarck or what?
Um, they live in Renton right now.
Oh, they do?
Yeah, they're renting a house or the. They have a house rented in town while they're building their house right now. I think they had it from Castle Town or somewhere, somewhere southeast and decided to do that.
Early, early company urgency management, maintenance, is that a maintenance?
Maintenance, no.
It's a early company emergency.
Management.
Management. Put that for.
The chair is staying as well.
Oh, yeah.
We contacted early company.
Oh, okay, yeah.
We're gonna do that.
Just gonna say that's not the Glencore Road, is it? We handled that, right?
No, this is really company purchasing management. Seems out as maintenance, it's management.
We split that house fifty-fifty on that town line, go right up like Glencore is.
Did you do that a year?
We did that last month or month before.
Yeah, it did mesh, we did down there.
Aaron, you can just fill out the box, I'll sign it.
God, he didn't see anything.
Yeah, well, like I said, I wasn't sure. I saw it was all covered.
Yeah, they had mesh, a mesh or something on there.
Did they fix the hole where the post is at though?
Well, that did get. Yeah, covered up and then put the mesh and then put the rock on top of it.
Okay.
What exactly? Highway thirteen spray foam walls.
That's for the shop.
That's for the Hazelton shop.
Oh. Good word, okay.
Highway thirteen is Wishigai, that's the name of his business.
Is Vince, is Vince?
Vince, my name.
Yeah, mine here, man.
It looks like a whole other shop in there now. Went in and moved the water heater for the guy so that they could spray foam behind there and stuff. That all used to be such a drafty building, cause of that old building, they just had like fiberglass insulation in the back walls and stuff. And then they, and then they put the metal on the inside now and actually, like with the lighting that we put in there, I mean, it's. And they shrunk the bathroom down a little bit too. You can actually get two blades in the trap now.
Really?
Okay, I've never been in there yet.
Did they get rid of that extra wall that was in there too? Where that second garage door was in, there was a wall that they removed that too?
Well, they took that door out and then they sprayed foam through, sheeted it off.
Oh.
Yeah, I think the outsides still just, they haven't figured out how to, cause I don't think you can get the metal to match that color.
Yeah, probably not.
On the inside, they metalled over and everything gets that white metal and just.
Brightens you up.
It looks like a whole other building you would be, I think it's the same building.
It's gonna be a lot one or two.
Well, I'll tell you one thing, it'll probably favor itself in that first year, just with propane. It pro pinks through the roof and that spray foam and that building is gonna be, well, not to mention the increase in size and how we can actually fit multiple pieces of equipment in that heated side.
I got a question about a deal here from Francis. What's with the rock break grant? Will we rent it, rock break or something?
Yeah. I didn't know if they were gonna do that or not. They asked me that, I'm like, would you rent it for the, for pulverizing the windows and all that stuff when they pull shoulders? How much did they do for it?
It is twenty-three hundred.
Does that go like a month or?
No, it's eight thirty to nine three and then from nine four to nine eight, since September.
I have no idea.
So. So who would they, I mean, they did, is this great here and they did do it or what's the deal there?
Well, we'd have to ask Skylar on what they did. I'm assuming they did like they did before, they probably just picked it up and they use it behind that one tractor. But who'd get from association accounts?
But Francis did do it, so.
No, no, they just, yeah, they picked it up.
But that's another deal, or were you using somebody else as the, which I, I, I totally against it, you know?
Well, the rock break, the reason why that was different is that's a pretty specialized tool though. Like, and that's not something you just go to rental and rent or something. And that's why that always kinda, they were using it to pulverize windows when they pull them shoulders and it's like three foot tall and that thing just, like all the sod and everything, it just disintegrates it. So on some of them projects, that's, you know, that's.
They did, yeah, it's.
Yeah, no, Francis didn't. I'm assuming it was probably picked up by John or Skylar or David or somebody and brought over and.
Did, did.
Then they used it for a day or two or whatever's on there and then they took it.
But like I said, I'm just totally against you then. You break it or it's hard to justify, you don't have an agreement right away.
Well, with that one, I know we did have.
Or this one you probably do, but.
Right, cause we have the insurance agreement too. It was at that, our, cause we checked into that before we rented the equipment and, uh, the insurance covers it just as long as we list it, so that's where, you know, that was probably still on the list for the insurance or whatever from before, but that's. Yeah, that's a, I remember a year, but you can just find them anywhere, so it's not like one of them deals where a lot of people.
Then you can actually.
Right, and that's. Actually, if I remember, a King Gar was the one that ran it. I guess it's probably down in Ninety-Eighth.
What exactly? What is this?
Two narrows, that's the pulvers.
He did pulver.
That's, oh, okay, okay. Probably goes out of.
That's just right now?
Other two over?
Yeah.
Seven fours?
Twenty-one and seventy.
Seven?
How do you know?
Okay, yeah. Ah.
See if you're like eight or eight or something.
Eighty-four right here, eighty-four.
Oh, eighty-four.
Yeah, so those are for Calvin's.
Yeah, those are for Calvin's, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
See, there's, uh, who's supposed to sign off on? Who's supposed to, they sign off? Is that where they sign off the initial?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's where your sign off is for the, for initially, okay.
Is, is that right, or is he up there?
Huh?
Who do you know?
Uh, one of them, Ardella and Tina.
Oh, okay, yeah.
They're both J S, so.
Jordi's here, I'm sure.
Okay, okay.
Usually the department will sign.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, yeah. Well, that's why I thought, how come like one Tina Weber wouldn't get it?
If you open it up, you probably sign.
Oh, he did, yeah, okay. So she just initialed it on the outside?
Jordi did initial it.
Hey, Marv, listen.
Yes.
Did you ever get an update on that, uh, the check-in system that we're gonna do for the, the automated time cards for the road department, basically? And did you ever give us a timeline?
I thought John was checking into that, wasn't he?
Yeah, it could be. I just wondered if you ever heard anything of that.
No, he hasn't said nothing to us.
I know they said it was gonna take a little while.
I haven't heard anything.
Can't pile up the asthma, update on that.
I don't know, he never came in today.
John?
Yeah.
Probably out of the, the options, hopefully, Ken.
Is there any out there, Josh? Is there any out there?
I don't know if already done.
He never reached down.
No. Don't you ever get done with that?
Well, I'm not gonna get done right now.
I have eight hundred acres of green, I have four hundred left. I've got six hundred acres of corn, and I've got eight hundred acres of something. I need to make it home.
Go leak down for two hours and come back, don't be a complainer.
I should go for a nap and put my new tires on. They haven't got anybody to do it. If they let their own machine, put them on myself.
Can they get away, do you?
They won't get, I don't think they're gonna get to, granted, they're gonna be good.
There's a radar gun, so it looks like you're complying any time soon.
Oh, really? Is it gonna rain? Oh.
Yeah.
You got some tarps open on your trucks.
Do you want me to give these further ads to you, or instead of throwing them out? Ready?
Thank you. Hope you relax and stuff.
Yeah. Superintendent, so we really want to know if you really get more information?
I don't forget about anybody in my.
It's like we almost have to up the fee to get somebody interested because like now, nobody has no interest in doing it.
There's nine eleven.
And we have to have one, right?
Yeah, you have to have one. And according to Adam, and I can't remember if it's D P I, there's just a few analysts that have to do with it. Um, you build a, kind of, office for the board of presidents. And then, not, not too much more after that, I guess, and then.
Well, that's why I definitely think that doesn't, um, do it. I mean, if there isn't that much involved.
Well, the Barker, please.
Resolutions and, and say. You don't just have to have somebody there on standby, what you can do is, it's like a natural game. Because there is nothing to do.
Did we ever have, we put, did put it in the picture?
We did.
Oh, we did? One of your personal shit.
I mean, if you, if you pay, I'm, I'm gonna pay better than that. Do you know what I'm saying? And there was a resolution passed back from Rusty's specifically to the schools. There was a resolution passed, schools and town.
And the school was, you know, and you didn't know.
One school doesn't have, you know, one does the spelling bee and one does the bus.
They're trained with bus.
For the nine drivers, so there's a, there's a.
So the excavators officially paid up, I would like that?
What's that?
It's a bit, it's five years. Final payment.
I think so. So we got this here two more hours, huh?
Well, I was gonna say, you guys wanna, I would say temporarily adjourn and come back in at five-thirty, if you wanna do that. I'm fine with that.
Good, being it's planned at five-thirty, we have to wait till then, huh?
Yeah, you can't move it early because it's a public hearing, so.
Oh, okay.
And we posted that it was gonna be at five-thirty, so I was.
Well, you know, Aaron, you talked to me yesterday about some changes you wanna make. I don't know why you couldn't discuss some of that now. With the budget, you want to learn nails. I don't know why you could talk about some of that now.
We're gonna discuss just ideas?
Yeah, you're not gonna be adopting anything.
Yeah, just unless there's budget discussion, you guys wanna just talk about them yourselves here, just to. Ideas that you have or whatever. I feel like this might just wake them in here, you know, we're gonna try to do the best way rather than discussing here. So. Let me see, you guys wanna just adjourn for two hours and then come back in at five-thirty here? Try and be here long after five and make sure you're here on time.
If you run home in a few rounds.
Yeah, I don't think you should. You might be late now. You better stay inside the lit area. Need a couple rounds, yeah. I'm gonna go home a couple Sunday nights, I'll be back at two o'clock for Sunday.
You don't wanna smell.
Okay, well, temporarily adjourn and come back at twenty-eight or five.